The regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council is open on Monday, February 27, 2023 at 5:30 PM. The closed session portion of the meeting has been canceled and open session will begin at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Good evening, Bellflower. The regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council is called to order on Monday, February 27, 2023 at 7:00 PM. There was supposed to be a closed session item, but it was canceled. So we're actually opening the meeting. Oh, it was open earlier, but there's no reportable actions since there was technically no meeting at all. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Hamada. Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Santenaz.
Here. It's our motion to excuse the absence of Mayor Protem Hamada.
Don't move.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Coops, seconded by Councilmember Sanchez, to excuse the absence of Mayor Protem Hamada. Without objection, that will be the order. Tonight's invocation will be led by Councilmember Coops and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Elizabeth Oba, the Director of Planning and Building Services. Please rise.
So please bow for our word of prayer. Our gracious heavenly Father, we come to you this Monday evening to give thanks for all the blessings bestowed upon us, especially mindful of the great rains that you've given to us and how much we need them and how much we appreciate them. Be with us as we plan our different items before us tonight. Give us the wisdom to do what's correct and possible for our city to make it better. We always want to be mindful of those that protect us, our first responders, our fire and our sheriff's department. Be with them as they do their best to keep us safe. In his name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Elizabeth. City Council announcements, let me start. Please stop by the Bellflower Chamber of Commerce office tomorrow morning, February 28 at 9:00 AM for the monthly morning mingle event. The networking event serves as a great platform to learn about local business and the community projects. The Chamber of Commerce has invited me to be tomorrow's special guest, where I'll be providing some updates on the city's projects and programs. This event will be held from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM at the Chamber Office located at the northeast corner of Bellflower Boulevard and Flower Street. For more information or to join the Chamber of Commerce, please call 562-867-1744. Next. Councilmember Ray Dunn, let me call you now.
The Bellflower Economic Development Department is adding email addresses to our business database. Get business advertising opportunities, city updates, networking events, grant information, and more going directly to your inbox. Email your first name and last name, business name, address, and phone number to economic-dev@bellflower.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Councilmember Dan Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Bellflower Volunteer Center works closely with community groups, residents, and organizations to provide spring baskets for students in our community. Currently, the Volunteer Center is seeking items for donation. That would include books, balls, puzzles, games, toys, candy, socks, and school supplies, gift cards, and toiletries. All donations will need to be received by March 2, 2023. If you'd like to please be a part of this important program, please contact the Volunteer Center at Sims Park, and they can be found at 804-1424, extension 2331. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dan. Councilmember Victor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. Bellflower business owners and operators have a special opportunity to participate with Thirty Seven Oaks, a commerce development company that helps product entrepreneurs scale and diversify through e-commerce, wholesale storefronts, and pop-ups. The city has partnered with Thirty Seven Oaks to offer a 10-course certified program that is designed to help support our local product-based merchants. To qualify for this course, your business must be product-based, for example, food, beverages, clothing, beauty, books, arts, et cetera, located in the city of Bellflower. You must have a desire to grow into a brick-and-mortar store in the city and must have a minimum of six months of business operations to apply. Apply by March 17 at www.37oaks.com/bellflower. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Victor. Tonight, we have two presentations. One is to recognize the St. John Bosco varsity football team. So I'd like to invite my colleagues to the riser. I'd like to invite, oh, that's loud. I'd like to invite our famed coach, Coach Jason Negro. Coach, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Tonight, we'll recognize the St. John Bosco varsity football team for their wonderful record last year. It was a tremendous record, 13-1, the Division One national champion, and the recognized national champion. So with that, especially when you won against Sarah, that was awesome. I mean, 45-0, that's even a contest. So, Coach, if I recall, this is now your third national championship? Okay, I'm keeping track. Okay. So with that, we'll recognize the St. John Bosco football, varsity football team with a certificate of achievement presented to St. John Bosco High School varsity football team to Coach Jason Negro. Congratulations on a tremendous 2022 football season. The city of Bellflower commands you for your hard work and dedication. We wish you continued success. And with that, we want you to win again next year and the following year and the following year. So, and signed by Mayor Santiago Santenaz, Mayor Protem Ramon Hamada, Councilmember Ray Dunn, and Councilmember Dan Coops, and Councilmember Victor Sanchez.
To the city of Bellflower, thank you for honoring it myself, as well as our program for this award. I am a proud resident, or I was a resident. My mother still lives over off McNabb and Hydale by the high school. I grew up here in the city of Bellflower. I went to Bellflower or Ernie Pyle Elementary. I also went to Bellflower Middle School and then on to St. John Bosco, where I graduated and went back as the head football coach. I'm very proud of this accomplishment for what we've been able to do for the city here in Bellflower. There are 17,000 high schools across the country that play 11-man football, and this is our third time being the number-one ranked team in the country. So couldn't do it without all you guys and the support and for you and all the things that we're able to accomplish over there off of Rosecrans and Bellflower Boulevard. So thank you, guys, very much, and go Braves.
Thank you. All right, that was cool. And the second presentation is the presentation to us. This will be given by the college president of the Servitos College, Dr. Jose Fiera.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to deliver this presentation to you. I want to acknowledge my board of members, Mr. James Cody Burkey, and some members of the Servitos College team here with me. So I try to come every year or so, but the last couple of years obviously have been different, and I wanted to take the opportunity to come, one, and say hello and kind of showcase a little bit of the good work that we are doing at Servitos College. It takes a village, right? And I have the opportunity to present the good work, but that doesn't mean it was exclusively my work. It's the work of everyone at Servitos College, from the support of the Board of Trustees, faculty, staff, administrators, and confidential employees that make the college what it is today. So getting back in the riddle of things, hopefully I'll be back every year or every six months and give you an update of what we're doing at the college. So one of the things that we have been working on is making sure that we reduce the time of completion for our students. And during the pandemic was challenging to do, however, we managed to make some progress during the pandemic and ensure that our students were successful as they were traversing the pandemic. So last year, we celebrated the largest graduating class. But before we get there, I want to kind of give you an overview of the progress that we have made in accelerating the speed of completion for our students. So in 2014, about 8% of our students were completing in two-year time. Servitos College is a two-year college, but most of our students come to school part-time and take longer than the two-year time to be able to complete. And the cohort of 2018, 15% of those students had already completed on time, which is nearly double the number of students from 2014, from the cohort in 2014 to the cohort in 2018. So when you look at the numbers, you may be wondering, why am I talking about 14, 15, 16, 17, 18? Those are entry point numbers. So if I was, we're just getting data from the 19 and the 20, so the 18 is the newest data that we have been able to report. We track them in six-year periods. So each cohort, essentially, we track the students that entered during that year over a six-year period. And then we have gone from graduating students in three-year period from 24% to 33% of the 2018 cohort. So as you see, the numbers are trending up. You may be wondering, why are we putting emphasis in the two or three-year graduation time? And it's what I like to call the opportunity cost. When our students come to Servitos College, we want to make sure that they complete as fast as possible, not because we don't want them around. In fact, we like them a lot, and that is why we want them to finish as quickly as possible, because as soon as they finish, their earning potential increase. So the faster they get there, the faster they will get to a job that has a higher pay and obviously that leads to economic mobility. So we want to reduce to the bare minimum the opportunity cost, meaning that we want to make sure that our students spend less time in college completing their degree and more time entering the workforce to maximize their earnings over their lifetime. The last couple of years, as I mentioned before, were complicated to navigate. However, the last year, we celebrated during the pandemic, mind you, the largest class in the history of Servitos College, awarding over 5,167 degrees and certificates to our students. And as you see, it continues to climb from what when we started in 2015, 2019, with a little under 2,500 students, to a little more than double our last class. Those numbers, along with the completion times, are incredibly important for us, as I said, the opportunity cost. But the next part of the research that we have done shows that the majority of our graduates tend to stay within our neighboring communities, meaning that if I grew up in Bellflower, chances are, like the coach, will return to Bellflower either to the city to work or to a neighboring city and work in the city where they grew up. And what we are seeing with that is that if we're able to speed their completion time, produce high-quality credentials that lead to high-paying jobs that automatically translate into social and economic mobility. So we like to think that we are a support mechanism for economic development for the cities, for the city councils, and so on, to improve our area over a period of time. Over the same time period, we have focused on three issues that are hindering our students' completion. The first one is transportation, the second one, food insecurities, and the third one, housing securities. At housing securities, as you are aware, we opened the first and only, at this moment, housing project in the state of California that is specifically focused for students who are either home insecure or homeless. So students that have access to the housing have to be in a financial situation that do not allow them to secure traditional housing within our area. We then focus on food resources, and we created the Franco's Market, which essentially is a supermarket. The picture that you see there is the actual picture of the supermarket that has fresh products, meats, and essentially everything that our students will need available to them. They come, they chop with dignity, they get a little chopping cart, they do the chopping, and they only have to say thank you and goodbye, and it's free of charge for those who are in need. And then we have moved into securing resources for transportation, because we noticed that due to the high cost of living in our area, rents, food, many of our students were having difficulties securing transportation to school. So with a partnership with Metro, we secure the Metro Go Pass for our students, in which for a very low cost, our students are able to access a universal Metro card that allows them unlimited rides during the semester, thereby facilitating their attendance to college, to go to work, and to meet their basic needs. Sometimes we're asked, okay, well, that's outside of the mission of the institution. And yes, it's a bit outside of the mission of the institution. Therefore, we have partnered with numerous institutions that are quite savvy as to how to provide these services to our students. So in the case of housing, we are partnering with Hobeness, an nonprofit organization. We let them do the housing management, the support of that, and that allows us to focus on the education of our students. In the case of transportation, we partner with the L.A. Metro Authority. They know how to do that work way better than we could. So we partner, we secure a good deal with them, and we let them provide the service for our students, because that's what they do best, and then that allows us to focus in our academics, because that's what we do best. And with Franco's Market, one of our largest partners is the L.A. Food Bank. We allow them to provide that support service. We created a very strong partnership with them, and that allows us to focus on what we do best, which is providing services for our students. So all that to say that when we meet the needs of our students outside of the classroom, they perform, and we have the data to show that our students are performing very well in the classrooms as we help them to remove many of the barriers to prevent them sometimes from entering our classrooms. So is that effort worth it? Absolutely. Many of you are graduates from Servitos College. Many of you know graduates of Servitos College that work in our community. But just to illustrate, every dollar that we put in a community college produces $11.70 in average, and the benefit accrues over the lifetime of the student while he or she is working. So the economic impact of community colleges within our region is very large, and while the effort seems like a big lift, it's important to recognize that that big lift translates into social mobility for our students and the betterment of our communities long term. And last but not least, I want to thank all of you. I want to thank the city of Bellflower and all of our communities for the support on Mayor CC. With Mayor CC, we are seeking to finish improving our facilities and modernizing the last several buildings that we still have from the early days of the college. We were actually going over the plan today. And the first building that we ever constructed is still standing, 1954, there was the field house. I'm sure our athletes are looking forward to replace that building. And the administration building and the student services building, it was in the early 60s and is still providing services to us. What you see there on the screen is what the student services building and administration building will look like in a few years when we are able to complete the construction of this building. We try to take the best care of the facilities as possible to ensure the, our taxpayer dollars go as long away as possible. And with all that, I would like to thank you for your time and answer any questions that you may have.
Dr. Fiera, thank you so much for taking the time to give us an update on the Servitos College. You know that housing is one of our biggest challenges these days, and it caught me attention about the village. Can you talk more about that? For example, let's say, what is the capacity? You said that to be qualified to avail of the services, they have to be homeless or on the brink of homelessness. Do they have to pay something, or what's the turnover? How long do they stay there? Something like that.
Yeah, so the village is a very non-traditional student housing. So the first part that makes it non-traditional is the requirement that students to be either homeless or home insecure. And then we essentially run a formula based on the financial aid that they receive, any income that they may have, and then calculate how much they will pay in order to live there. Many of them, their contribution is zero, and some of that is a few hundred dollars, but is very, very much under market, even on the highest tier of payment. I don't think it's higher than $800 a month. And those are very few students. Most pay significantly less than that. Our current capacity in the village is about 27, 28 students. However, that was the beginning of our housing project. We recently submitted an application to be able to build housing on campus, and if we are successful, we should be, have the capacity to house about 394 students in the near future. The support of the Board of Trustees on this have been incredible. They are going to put a significant contribution out of the general fund, about $12 million, and we are seeking about $68 million in grants from the state to be able to do the rest of the construction. We are putting, we put a proposal together that has the lowest cost per bed anyone could find at the state. So if we are successful on that, the students will not pay anything higher than $714 a month, which is like 40% of market rent, market cost.
Wow, that's wonderful. Yeah. I hope you can get all the funding that you need.
Thank you.
And the other thing I want to comment is, I really enjoy your state of the college. And one thing that I think that you added recently was the asking students for their testimonial. To me, that is very impactful, very powerful statement. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any question of Dr. Fiera?
Utilities included in the housing?
Segal.
The utilities, do they pay electric or gas?
Everything will be included on the cost of the rent, yes.
If I remember right, the last time you presented, you showed the program that was available, that if you kept your grades at a certain level, your tuition was forgone. You could basically get a free education.
That is, that is still the case.
I'm sure you still have that.
Yes, that is still the case.
So these three items that you added now, are those, were they in place when you had the free tuition, or are these something that's rather new?
All these programs are about two and a half years old. We developed them right as the pandemic was starting.
So the transportation one was interesting, that when you noted that it's during the, when session is on, you get a free bus ride.
Correct.
Now, there's a way to determine that that pass is negated during the summertime hours, or do they get it 365 days a year?
They, if they take summer classes, they can go and collect another transportation ticket, yes.
Do you have employment possibilities?
On campus?
Yes.
Yes, we do, and we are currently working with a member of Congress to be able to expand the pilot to employ veterans on campus outside of the Veterans Center. So we're actively trying to open employment opportunities for our students on campus, because we have found that if we are able to provide employment, they are more likely to go to class, meaning if they go to work outside, sometimes they find something else better and more entertaining to do, and they miss class. So they do a little better when we employ them on campus.
So the only part of the puzzle that I don't see here is, what do you do for your students in terms of medical needs?
Thank you for asking for that. We do have a full service medical center on campus. We provide basic care, and our students pay, I think, don't quote me on this, I may have it wrong, I think it's $25 medical fee, and other than that, they just have to pay for anything that is outside of the traditional plan.
All right. Thanks for the answers.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dunn?
I was amazed to see within six years, you doubled the graduation. And what do you attribute that to? Was it that much more enrollment? Or it actually doubled in six years?
Yeah. Well, I personally didn't. I think it was the effort of the entire institution, and what we did, we focused on streamlining the career opportunities for the students. So when you go to basically any college, you see a catalog that usually has 800, 1,000 classes, and the students kind of pick and choose from there. We are being very intentional as to how we present the opportunities for our students. So with clear maps, they tend to navigate the curriculum.
They can get their classes when they need them.
Correct. So we're aligning the two.
What a simple thought. I remember the days, I can wish I had that class, I need that class, and you don't get that class.
Yeah, so that's primarily what we're doing. The other part is we are putting a lot of support services. So our counselors are very proactive on doing outreach to our students. Our faculty are being way more flexible in how they schedule their classes as well. And we quite literally have contracted services to call the students when they're missing. So we have some work to do, but...
Has enrollment been up in the last six years?
Currently, we are trying to catch up to the pre-pandemic numbers, but we are 10% higher than we were the previous year. Our highest point of enrollment was almost four years ago, that we crossed the 18,000 full-time enrollments, but that is not very typical for us.
Why I ask that? Because if you're graduating them quicker and you don't have them back, feel more enrollment coming, then you're going to have less enrollment.
Yes.
You could put yourself out of business.
A little bit, but I think over time, it balances out.
Right, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Dunn. Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Fiera, thank you for your presentation. Thank you for being here. Congratulations to you and to your team. You guys are doing tremendous work. Just a couple of questions, more so related to your partnership with our local high schools. Would you mind highlighting that a little bit, how you've also created and streamlined opportunities for high school students to advance while they're in high school?
Yeah, thank you. So that is actually part of the answer of the previous question. We created partnerships with all of our local high schools, all of our local school districts, and some outside of our district. And the idea of that has been always to be able to provide 60 units of college credit before the students graduate. We're not quite there yet. We're not quite there yet, but we have been able to get to thirty units. So there are several high school students that are finishing high school halfway done with their associate degree. So when they come to Cerritos College, they only have one more year or less than, I mean, a little over a year to finish. And for the most part, that is also free of charge through through a legislation that was passed at the state level a few years ago. If that is not necessarily what the students are looking for, we also have the opportunities to concurrently enroll in our college and the high school, meaning they go and take their traditional classes, and maybe they go in the evening or on a weekend, and they take different college classes. When they do this, there is no charge for doing these classes, and they also get an early start on Cerritos Complete. And then they get the additional free tuition by the time they get to our our college. We have had already a handful of students, they have completed their associate degree and their baccalaureate degree, I mean, sorry, and their and their high school degree at the same time. And last week, I met with a student out of Cerritos High who happens to be sixteen, will be transferring to Cal Poly Pomona during the fall, and has now graduated our high school. So she will finish her associate degree in May before she finish high school in June.
I was also too, I was too, I was also impressed with the state of the Cerritos College when when I was able to attend. I think what my colleagues would find interesting, some of your trade programs, if you don't mind just briefly highlighting that for my colleagues here, and then also the people in the audience, or?
Absolutely. So we have a very, very strong career and technical education arm of the institution. A lot of the alignment of our traditional programs have come from the inspiration that we have gotten out of our career and technical education programs. One of my favorite programs, for instance, is welding. Incredibly strong program at Cerritos College, and the possibilities for jobs are incredible. So when you talk about welding, sometimes we just simply see what we can see on a normal welding job, but there are very, very specialized areas of welding that we do offer. For instance, we do a lot of aviation in welding, and we have a number of partnerships with industry in which our students learn a very specialized technique in welding, become certified on that, and have higher wages. One of the most popular for higher wages is pipe welding, work with the oil or gas industry, very, very well compensated as well. And we do offer all those certificates and possibility of licensing at Cerritos College. Our nursing program continues to be one of the best nursing programs in the state. We recently closed the applications, and we received well over five hundred applicant for about ten percent of the spots that that we have offered. Our automotive program, we can not keep enough students long enough, so we have to work hard with our partners in industry to ensure that they don't take our students before they complete. Because due to some of the partnerships that we have with the dealerships and with the manufacturers, all the students receive first half training of the new software and the new vehicles coming into the market. So for some of the manufacturers, we are second after they have trained their existing technicians to receive that training. So our students enter the workforce with the latest and greatest knowledge at that time, which has made our students very attractive for hire.
Thank you, Dr. Pharoah. Appreciate you sharing that. And again, just congratulations to you, your trustees, and all of your staff. That concludes my comments and questions, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. Again, Dr. Phara, thank you so much for taking the time to do your report tonight. You're always welcome here, and thank you for your leadership, and I wish you the best.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members, for your support and for giving me a few minutes to speak with you, and.
Of course, yes.
We'll see you soon.
Please do. All right, thank you. For tonight, there are no public hearings, there are no ordinances and resolutions for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Oh.
Public comments.
Public comments, Mr. Stewart.
Yeah. This is the time set aside for the public to address city council matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You will be given three minutes to address city council.
Is there anyone here who'd like to speak before the council on a non-agenda item? There's no charge. All right, moving along. Item thirteen A, Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, this is a consideration, possible action, discuss and provide direction regarding the manner in which members of the city council appoint members of the Planning, Parks, Recreation, and Public Safety Commissions. As you recall, on January twenty-third, the council had a discussion of whether or not the the appointment should be made from within the confines of their own districts. The item was discussed fairly resolutely, and it was tabled to a future meeting. And I I think there was a consensus being formed at the last meeting, but the item has been put back on the agenda for your discussion and action, if you choose to take any.
All right, thank you so much for the introduction. And as you recall, when the city was divided into districts way back in two thousand eighteen, so we have been into three different election cycles already. And so I just kind of, I made a request for discussion since we haven't had any discussions since two thousand eighteen. So it's about time, and I think we have a very robust discussion three meetings ago. And and we'll go from there. So who would like to start? Councilmember Dunn?
I'll break the ice. Yeah, I kind of lean towards continuing with commissioners at large. I think it's better to draw from a talent pool of the entire city for each of us and just instead of just our districts or whatever. And I know, I think, I voted, I voted, I expressed that opinion last time, and we kind of tabled it because we were a council of five. And I think under the situation where we see it now, I think that's why it's here in front of us. That's my two cents.
Okay, all right, thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too am of the mind that maintaining the the commission at large and allowing that to bring different, different opinions and different expertise across the city allows us to be fully well-rounded. I think that when we start, if we start limiting to districts, it may make it difficult or also create more narrow-minded or focused mindsets. But that's my two cents as well.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Coops?
I agree that we should leave it as it is. I would like for us to be able to draw off the entire city, the talent that we have, and not have any restrictions. So I'd like to keep it as we are doing now.
And how about your your idea from the last meeting? I thought that was a kind of.
Well, it was innovative thing, and I didn't get much traction, and I'm ready to rescind that idea.
I was warming up to it, actually.
Well, if you want to run with it, you see where your votes go.
I think the, I think I like your idea. Again, this is an open discussion. Our minds, as you as you can see, have been preset. After thinking about it, the the only big difference is, your suggestion is, there should be at least one commissioner from each district.
From each council member appointment?
Yeah, from each district, basically. So so it's, to me, it is very valid, because at this point, the way you see it is district number four has no representation in terms of the commission. That, to me, is a drawback. I don't want to force the issue of having all the all the commissioners for, let's say, particular district come from that district. So I think with your suggestion, I think it becomes a, not restricting the appointments from a particular district, but at the same time, having some kind of representation from all districts.
I understand that.
So.
I I floated the idea, and I don't regret having proposed that. But at the same time, many of the districts sometimes not do not have the enthusiasm to serve on these commissions. I'm parsing my words here. That there may not be people that want to participate, that are of the quality that would like to be a part of our community service. And so I don't want to hobble any one of us if we find someone that's truly good in one area or not, that we would not have any restrictions or any impediments in trying to appoint whomever we feel would serve the best. The basis for all my decisions are, what will make the city of Belfar better? What will enhance the city? Now, fairness comes into that as well, because that's making the city a better place as well. But I'm looking for the best potential quality members of our community to serve on these commissions, because they recommend to us the things that we can consider as being important. And many of these things are already pre-decided, and we look at it, say, hey, they've had the discussion, and we move on. But I do think what the best option for the city is to leave it wide open, so we have no restrictions as far as who comes in and makes application for wanting to be on these commissions. But I understand your viewpoint, because that was my viewpoint.
Right.
To just have at least one person from each, out of every area.
Yeah, because I'm kind of thinking that it's going to be very hard for me, it's going to be a very difficult pill to swallow for me. If I'm a resident of particular district X, for example, in City Council, you're telling us that there's no one in our district that can be appointed a commissioner.
But you have the right to choose anyone you want. You can go to any part of the city, and if you feel personally that someone's disenfranchised from a particular district, you can go ahead and appoint somebody out of there.
If I may add, we may want to then look at increasing our marketing budget for this particular opportunities, because it's not that we didn't open it or wasn't available to anyone. We opened it up, and we marketed it as we did, and we didn't receive any applications from from that specific district or a specific district, for say, they came from other districts, and that's not from lack of trying, it's just maybe we do need to increase how we communicate these opportunities. That might just be another item to consider as part of this conversation. Because I've had two openings, and both have been posted, and both have been shared. And in both cases, for my Parks and Rec Commission, the two applicants came out of different districts, and then for Planning Commission, the same thing. So I would just throw that out there as another item for consideration, how we market these opportunities.
But we're never overwhelmed with applicants. We never have been.
Right.
We're grateful for the chance to get quality people to apply. But if you, as a commissioner, as a council member, want to include, you can include anyone you want now. You need to have any restrictions at all. But as mayor, if you say, you know what, District Four doesn't have the right representation, I want to make sure one of my council, one of my commission members are from that area. You can do that.
Which we do now.
Which we do now, and you can continue to do that.
Unfortunately.
Now, if you want to have the issue forced upon you.
There's the one that, see, that's the thing that really bothers me, is there is no one in the district, because if we could go back to the recap, I mean, Councilmember Dunn, you have three, two from your own district and one out of district. And Councilmember Coops, you have the same thing.
Right.
Two within your district and one out of the, oh, no.
I've got two out and one in.
And I have two in, one out. And I know that.
Sounds like belly buttons, don't it?
And I know that Mayor Protem Hamada has got two in and one out.
So we, so we do show some diversity there.
Right. The only exception is, I don't know how we can, I think we need to find a way to really engage them, because I don't want to, I want to make sure that they are represented. I know that they got good representation via Councilmember Sanchez, but we need additional person. That's my, that's my goal.
So what what you would propose is at least one from within your, one commissioner out of any three?
Yes, just one.
That was originally my idea.
That was the suggestion from Councilmember Coops.
I created his thought.
That was a very, very creative idea.
Well, you know, your your district people, they're the ones that voted you in.
Right.
They, you know, your your circles of voters would expect, hey, you can't, we all voted for you out of us, you know.
And now we're excluded.
People that voted, you know, you can't get anybody to, you know, for your commission.
Right, in your own district, yeah.
I see it.
Yeah, I see it, that's why I said, I mean, if there was a, an appointment from District Four, I think this would not be a point of discussion. All right, Councilmember Sanchez, are you?
I'm open to the idea if we must have it. And then I would request that it would take effect at the term expiration date of the current commissions.
Perspective, yeah.
Perspective.
Oh, yeah, of course, yeah.
Who wouldn't mess with that?
I'm fine with that, you know.
Who wouldn't want to fire somebody?
And I don't want you to go back.
Very good.
So it's moving forward.
Okay.
So it'd be two years from now?
Yes.
Before we'd implement it?
No, two years for the.
For you.
For one.
So basically, it's based off of election years.
Okay.
No, but also for the public safety, they're all two-year term.
Right, so at the expiration of terms.
It's the Parks Commission, that is two.
It's the Parks Commission.
Right, okay. Two years, first one of this, two-year term. Are you okay with that, Councilmember Coops?
Well, it seemed I planted a seed here that seemed to have grown. I'm trying to put, we'd be gone on it, you guys are making it grow. But I can certainly live with it. I I hate to restrict our ability to govern and only use, you know, there's some really quality people that may not be living on the right street, and I don't exclude them. But at the other time, I can see what I was trying to do, what you just said, create some equality in the districts and participation.
Right.
In the districts. I'm not sure this is going to cure that or not. But be honest, until you get close to city politics, I didn't know what, there were commissions? You know, you learn that as you investigate council work, that there are three commissioners. And at one point, we had four without a water commission, and we have.
If I may add, I'll add this, I I've been working for the last two years to establish neighborhood watch groups within the District Four. We talk about representation, that's another opportunity for residents of the community to to represent their neighborhoods, immediately impacting them, and that's been a struggle. Not, that's not for lack of trying. I'll tell you that our Public Safety Director, Joel Hockman, and myself, and and others have been attempting and attempting to establish more of these bodies. It's been very difficult. It, you know, it's, again, not for lack of trying. So so I, I mean, if we want to talk about representation, I'm going to bring that out to to the podium today or to the dais to let us, let everyone know fully openly that that there is attempts to increase participation from the fourth district. And we've been seeing that through 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 people coming to these meetings and public comments. But even then, they come and, you know, we'll get complaints, but when it comes to work, it's a whole nother thing, and I don't blame them, I get it, they, you know, I don't have a solution. But since we're talking about representation, I'm going to bring it up here, because it's, that's part of it. It's how do we engage that district to to be more more engaged and more involved?
Well, I I think my observation, times have changed, because in the past, I mean, there were so many active neighborhood watch in your area, particularly Rose Street. And I don't know what happened in the meantime. So it seems like there's a lot and lot less and less participation.
Are you going to take public testimony on this?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. All right, I think we kind of.
Let's hear what the public says.
Beat it to the, beat it to the death? All right, any, is there anyone who would like to share their input on this item? Don't be shy. I just ask you to please state your name, sign in, and then I speak directly to the and then I speak directly to the microphone. You're being recorded.
Yeah, my name is Guy Bremer. I've lived there my whole life. I think that the original comments, where you're just going to draw from a whole pool of Belfar, regardless of what position is open, is the way to go. Why would you want to limit yourself to having to pick somebody out of a district? It sounds like there's a one district that's kind of having a little bit of a challenge of getting people to participate. You know, that's going to be a work in progress. You know, the demographics or the people that live there, just, you know, maybe they're just not that interested. I think you need to pull from the whole city to get your best candidate. That's what's going to suit Belfar the best and not limit yourself to, you know, so many square blocks of real estate that you got to pull a commissioner out of there. I don't think that's, I don't think that's the right direction. I think you, you just need to open up to the whole city and find the best person. Every, every district that sounds like has got one or two residents that are commissioners. There's a district that's a little bit of a struggle. I'm sure he's networking with his people, and he's talked to him, and I'm sure he's made the effort. And it's just a matter of that's, you know, that's the hand he's dealt in that district with the demographics and the population there. And I'm sure he's tried. So I just think, we just need to keep it wide open for whatever district, and the best candidate gets the spot. And it's, it's, it's that councilman's choice to make, to make. And he's, he shouldn't be held back or limited. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Just to clarify, the proposal, one of the proposals is not to limit to one particular district. So the proposal is to, to appoint at least two from the same, at least one from the district where the council member is located. So it's not all three commissioners coming from the same district, just for clarification. Anyone else?
Good evening, council. Commissioner Hack on the Parks and Rec Commission. Been on the commission now for fifteen years. And I agree also that it should be able to, the councilmen should be able to choose from the whole city. I can remember back when, when Councilman Danton first got in. I think a lot of them have certain individuals in mind as they're going into office that would do a, their, their skill sets and their personalities would be great in the specific commission. So you have my vote to keep it open. Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Hey, James Cody Burkey. Just real quick, as far as the intentions of this, I think it makes a lot of sense. Might consider looking at that as a guideline rather than a rule. There's a lot of things that, for example, we do at the college that we don't necessarily make new rules about, but we create initiatives where we work together to try to accomplish something. So if you want to increase representation, might look at that as kind of a five-person initiative across the council without necessarily creating more rules for yourself. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. All right. What is your pleasure?
You need a motion to close the public hearing? Or was it a public hearing?
It's public comments.
Public comments.
Do you want to make a motion?
You know, yes, thank you, councilmember.
All right.
I actually really liked that last comment. I think that, that it was said by Mr. Trustee Burkey. I think that if it's an initiative of ours to get more engagement, I think that that's something that we should look at. Maybe have a separate conversation about that, bring it back. I don't know what staff would think about that, but I think that would be, that would be a neat thing to have a discussion about. How do we engage and activate District Four a little bit more? So with that, I'd like to make a motion to, to maintain and, and, and keep things status quo as they are with regards to the commissions at large.
I'll second the motion.
A motion by Councilmember Sanchez, seconded by Councilmember Coops, to keep the same process for appointing commissioners. Did I capture the essence of the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Danton?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Santinas?
No. All right, next item. Consent calendar. Is there anyone who would like to recu, is there any conflicts?
No.
No conflicts at all?
No conflicts, wow.
At all?
First time.
Clean slate.
First time in this mayor's year.
Anyone who'd like to pull an item for separate discussion?
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Coops, seconded by Councilmember Sanchez to approve the consent calendar. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Danton?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Santinas?
Aye. All right, down to the end of the meeting. Councilmember reports. Councilmember Danton?
I have nothing tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Coops?
Same story. Nothing to offer tonight, and I have no one to report the demise of, which is a...
That's no conflict.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to acknowledge and state that on Saturday, this past Saturday, or was it the Saturday before, we attended a grand opening of Snow Funeral Services and, and, and Paws Food Services over on Ramona and Lakewood Boulevard. They were made aware that the mayor wishes them the best of luck and that my entire council colleagues do as well. Councilmember Coops was in attendance as well. So just want to, it was a good event, fun event. They had trampolines and everything, and a lot of members from the chamber were present, and a lot of members from the community. And I'll let you report on the other items that we were a part of in the last couple of weeks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We did the Little League.
Oh, we, well, that's, I'll let, I'll let the mayor report on that.
The mayor, the Little League.
All right, thank you so much. Councilmember Coops and Councilmember Sanchez and I were at the opening ceremonies for the Greater Belfar Little League. It was well-attended. There were twenty-six baseball teams and six softball teams. It was well-organized. I want to thank all the, the directors of GBLL, the organizers, staff, sponsors, the coaches, the managers, especially the team moms. They're very important, so quite a great, quite a, a great opening day. And I also extended the invitation to the president of Greater Belfar Little League. Once, once they finish their competition, that we can recognize the winners, the winning teams at the, at the future council meeting. Also, with a sad note, I'd like to request that this meeting be adjourned in memory of the Most Reverend David, David O'Connell. He is the vicar of San Fernando region. The Most Reverend David O'Connell was born on August thirteenth, nineteen fifty-three, August sixteenth, nineteen fifty-three, in Ireland, and died unexpectedly on February eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, at the age of sixty-nine. He served as the Los Angeles area for the entirety of his career as a priest. Bishop O'Connell was a, was the Episcopal vicar of the San Gabriel Pastoral Region, one of the five regions in the archdiocese of Los Angeles. He was appointed titular bishop of Calasse and auxiliary bishop in two thousand fifteen. He received a Bachelor of Arts degree in philosophy and English literature from the University of College of Dublin in nineteen seventy-five, a Bachelor of Divinity from Maynard College in nineteen seventy-seven, and a Master's of Spirituality from Mount St. Mary's College in nineteen eighty-seven. Since his ordination to the priesthood, Bishop O'Connell served as associate pastor at St. Raymond Parish in Downey, St. Marie-Germain in Long Beach, and St. Hillary in Pico Rivera. Bishop O'Connell also served as a member of the priest pension board as well as the Archdiocesan, Archdiocesan Finance, Finance Council, Council of the Priests, and Together in Mission Board. In his pastoral ministry, Bishop O'Connell was always very active in serving those in need and will be greatly missed. Archbishop Gomez said it very rightly when he said that Bishop O'Connell was a peacemaker with a heart for the poor and the immigrants. I had several opportunities to chat with him, celebrate Mass, attended Mass that he celebrated, and he's just a, a very heartwarming guy. He's really a shepherd and, and very low-key. I will miss him on a personal note. He's just a wonderful guy, wonderful priest. And with that, our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to the O'Connell family in the archdiocese of Los Angeles. So with that, this meeting tonight is adjourned in the memory of the, of Most Reverend David G. O'Connell to the next regular meeting of the Belfar City Council at five thirty PM on Monday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. This meeting is now adjourned.